The Curville City Council Workshop is in session. Do we have any public comments?
No, sir, no one has signed up.
Let's go right to the information discussion on budget.
Sure, so as has been our custom, we usually have two budget workshops with the city council during the months of June and July. We take the opportunity during workshop format just to have really an informal discussion, kind of give you lay of land, give a little bit of a horizon view. You know, for many of our departments, the budgeting process is a year-long process. We get a budget approved in the September, August-September timeframe, and they're almost immediately starting, you know, for police, fire, public work, parks and rec. Those folks are starting on the next budget season, on kind of going through, so there's not much rest for them. Certainly over the winter months and the spring months, doing a lot of budget activity. As we've mentioned to you all before, we go through a very rigorous process where apartment heads and some of their key staff are then meeting with the finance department and our key personnel, mostly Julie and Amy, that are going through the initial budget takes and then going through again with another round after that with the city managers Budget Review Committee. We're going through kind of another slice of that budget. And so when it gets to this point, we're about 90 to 95% complete. A big part of it, though, is really better forecasting where revenues are coming in, right? And so the summer is really very critical for us in a number of regards, both from a property tax standpoint. The final appraisal rolls don't really come in until the end of July, which is almost synced up with the exact time that we actually have to submit the formal budget to the city council. In addition, we've got more than about nine months' worth of sales tax history that has now come through, and so that gives us some degree, although, you know, again, that's a very volatile revenue source, and so we're constantly monitoring that. But it does give us some history about how that's at least performed during this last fiscal year, as well as the summer budget, certainly in relation to water sewer fund. Most of our water sales, much of that occurs during the summer months, and so the weather, it's very weather-dependent. So anyway, so that just kind of gives you a broad overview of what we're looking forward to as we go forward. Certainly you all are familiar with the budget calendar. We do have this workshop, we do have another workshop scheduled with you all in the July timeframe, where we'll be talking more about water sewer fund and the other funds in particular. Today's main focus really is on general fund. With that, I'll turn it over to Amy.
All right. So here's our agenda for the day. You can see there are quite a few things on there, and EA has pretty much covered the first one already on budget, calendar, and process. But I will just direct your attention to this handout that I put at your place here that shows our budget calendar and does show how this is a most-of-the-year process to get the budget done, and we've been working on it since January. Jump right in then to the budget overview.
Just a quick question, sorry, just a quick question on this calendar. Is it posted on the website?
No, this calendar is not on the website. And jumping into the budget overview, I'd wanted to just go over a few highlights here. So this is the general fund that we're talking about, which is, you know, our largest fund and our main operating fund. And on the revenue side, if we're looking at big blocks here, property tax and sales tax are our two big revenue pieces, and that's what EA was just talking about as well, and some things that are coming together in the summer specifically on those two line items are important to our budget process. On the expenditure side, personnel is our biggest expenditure.
As we've talked about many times, it's people, right? We're in the people business, and it's people that are delivering our services. We'll have lots of comments about equipment and facilities and other things today, but ultimately, you know, we're in the people and the service delivery business.
And this is our, you know, general fund discussion, so of course we do have large expenditures in capital projects and asset replacement, but those are separate funds. So that 70% that you're looking at there is the general fund personnel. Moving on to property tax.
Yeah, so I just wanted to provide a slide to, you know, again, reiterate that, you know, all of your property taxes collected as a citizen or a business owner, those are not going to the city. In fact, a very small proportion of those are actually going to the city. The lion's share is going to the independent school district, and certainly the county, you know, it's just under, or just over a fifth of that, and then UG are in headwaters. So the city's about 24% locally of what the local property tax collection is, someone's individual property tax bill. So just kind of walking through these bullets, as we mentioned before, property tax valuations, that's always a January 1st, so that would be January 1st of '21, and then that collection occurs, you know, thereafter. And we have a very good collection rate in Kirk County, which is good. We're, it's usually around 97 to 98% collection or better.
Yeah, real over 98%.
Yeah, so that's a good thing locally. The appraisals, that is an independent entity, completely separate from the city, completely separate from all of these other property tax jurisdictions, so, and that is by state statute, and really kind of that separation of the collection and the actual jurisdictions from the ones that set those values. And that is set at market per state statute. They go through that process of that independent evaluation and then pass that along to different collection-type entities. For us, we utilize the Cur tax collector for that. Those values, those KCAT values are audited by the comptroller every two years to make sure that they are, they are achieving market value by statute. They have to do that.
And we've talked about this some in other workshops we've had in previous years, but I know not everyone was part of those. So on that audit by the comptroller, that really is driven by the school district, and so if the appraisal district is found to be undervaluing properties, then our school district's state funding is hurt by that. They, their state funding is decreased if we, if they find that the appraisal district is intentionally undervaluing properties. So we've got to be real careful with that. All right, property value analysis. So there's kind of a lot going on with this slide, I want to break down a few things. So the graph on the left, the market value, so market value is up this year, 7.9% compared to the previous year. Do you want to note that this is the preliminary tax roll? So there can be a lot of changes between now and the end of July, and specifically changes around people who are protesting their valuation. So this includes the value at the initial value. It does not, you know, if the appraisal review board takes the value down, that's not reflected here. This is the initial valuation. So property value's up, not up by as much as they were last year, though, but still up pretty significantly. And then if you look at the, the numbers, the table that's just below that graph, we have it broken down by category there, and see one thing that, you know, jumps out right away is that multifamily category. So that's where the biggest change was, and some of that is a big change just because of new valuations. So, you know, we have the landing, we have Cinderella Ridge finished, you know, some of those things coming online that weren't previously there. And then some of it is actual existing apartment complexes. The appraisal district changed the way they were doing the valuations on those this year. And so what they did is they hired an outside appraisal company called the Eagle Appraisal that they've worked with on, for many years now, but to go in and specifically look at apartment complexes and do an income-based valuation approach, which is one of their allowed valuation approaches. But they really wanted that to, to be completely independently done by experts who do those income-based valuations. So I know that they do have protests in from most of those apartment complexes that had large increases in their valuation. From talking to Sharon Konstantinidis, the chief appraiser, she feels like they have a very good case for the value that they came up with. They're using outside experts, independently done, that kind of thing, but they will have to go through the review board process and see if the review board, you know, keeps the valuations where they initially put them. So that's one of the bigger risks, or, you know, could change our numbers fairly significantly if, if those valuations change. Like EA mentioned, these are valuations as of January 1st. So when you think of things like HEB, you know, it was partially finished on the 1st, but not completely finished, or like the landing, they didn't have people moved in at January 1st, that kind of thing. So what you look around and see right now is not necessarily reflective of what was in place on January 1st. Looking at that new taxable value over on the right-hand side, you can see that we had less new taxable value in, for this fiscal year, 2022 budget year, than, than what we had last year. And that does seem a little bit unusual because we do see a lot of activity going on, but I think a lot of it has to do with that January 1st date and what was actually completed on January 1st. But that means January 1st, 2022, I would expect there'll, there'll be some more significant changes there as some of these larger projects will be all the way complete at that point. And that new taxable value is an important number because basically, the city gets all of that revenue. We're not, there's no restrictions on if something completely new is built, the full valuation of that at the full tax rate is allowed as revenue for the city. The state does have restrictions on existing property and how much it can increase and that kind of thing, but if it's brand-new, it's, it just, you know, comes straight to us as new property tax revenue. Any questions on that before I move to the next one? All right. So this next slide gets into property tax rates and revenue. So you can see by this chart, the bars are actually property tax revenues. Our property tax revenue is going up every year, but the line shows our property tax rate. So our property tax rate, city council has decreased that property tax rate in three of the last four years. So even though that rate is going down, the revenue is going up, and that's because of increased valuations and because of new property that's being put on the rolls. And for 2022, let me go back to that one slide real quick. For 2022, the, what we have right now is a forecast in at the existing property tax rate. So we have that in as an unchanged property tax rate. This is where things get a little complicated, but with property tax, this is heavily legislated, and everything that we do with property tax is according to very strict tax code rules. And in 2019, the legislature made some pretty significant changes to property tax codes, and they put in some new terminology and some new rates, that kind of thing. So these are some terms that you're going to be seeing over the next couple of months, and just wanted to give you a little bit of familiarity with them. So the no-new revenue rate is a term in the tax code that means the tax rate that would produce the same amount of tax revenue if it's applied to the same property's tax in both years. So basically what that means is if your property valuation goes up, your rate has to come down to get the same amount of revenue. It is important to remember that this applies only to existing property. So what I was just talking about before with the new property, that's not part of that no-new revenue rate. We, you know, we get the full valuation there, but the existing property is what goes into the calculation here for the no-new revenue rate. Then there's something, this is something new this year called the unused increment rate. So the legislature put into effect some caps on how much property tax revenue can increase, and there's a calculation that we have to do that caps how much our property tax rate can be, and that's called the voter approval rate. If we go above that tax rate, we actually have to have an election to go above that voter approval rate. And so that's just a calculated rate. Then we have the adopted tax rate. So the adopted tax rate is what city council decides the tax rate should be, and if that voter approval rate is more than the adopted tax rate, the difference between those two is called unused increment. So that means that's, you know, a part of the tax rate that city council could have chosen to increase taxes by that much, but they didn't. So the difference between those two is the unused increment rate. And then that voter approval rate that I've referred to before, the way that we calculate the voter approval rate is looking at the actual debt service rate, the no-new revenue rate for maintenance and operations, and then you'll see that times 1.035. That's what the legislature put in last year. So they're saying property tax can only go up 3.5% in a single year, the maintenance and operation portion of it, and that no-new revenue rate, or remember, is only on the existing property, not the new property. And then plus the unused increment from the previous years equals the, the overall voter approval rate. So we do have some unused increment from last year. We have a little over 2 cents of unused increment from last year because council approved a rate that was 2.2 cents less than the voter approval rate, so we have that unused increment available.
You can add that to, is that what you're saying?
We can add it to.
We need to?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm late. No, I got to, I got to work.
That's right.
So we've tried to, this is a very simplified, you know, calculation here. Amy's got about a two-page legal sheet, spreadsheet that goes through that, because it's very complex when you're backing out a whole number of things, not just new values that may be on there, but also tax freeze has a component to it that makes it very complex. And then, of course, you know, all of these are certainly in flux, as we mentioned before, over the course of these early summer months, as those, some of those property value pieces, particularly some of the higher ones, may be in protest. And so we're trying to figure out where those categories fall and where they may actually, you know, end up on their valuations, and so it becomes a very complex exercise to try to work through these estimations.
Yeah, I have to work in like lawsuits and annexations, de-annexations, new exemptions. So if you're interested in your budget book from last year, page 341 to 361, those 20 pages is the calculation, so.
Amy, with the unused, is there, are there restrictions on that as to how it can be used?
A little bit. So it, there's not restrictions as far as like it has to be used for public safety or, you know, there's nothing like that, but it is, so say we have 2.2 cents of unused increment. If we use any of that unused increment in the current year, then it goes to zero for the next year. So whatever, yeah, they don't, if you use one cent, you don't have 1.2 cents left over, you have zero cents left over. So if you use any of it, it goes to zero.
No, I, no, I don't want to go back to the beginning, but have you introduced any proposals yet, or you've just been going over the history of?
Yeah, really just talking about the budget process thus far.
Process, okay.
Yeah, and the initial parts of property tax.
We don't need to go back, I just wanted to mention.
The one thing that I do want to mention, though, as far as proposals is, so the budget that we're working on right now, which EA mentioned, is about 90% complete. Right now, we have the property tax revenue in with the tax rate unchanged. We have it staying at the 51.16, which is what it was, what it was lowered to last year.
51.16 represents what?
So it's.
What does that number mean?
Okay, so looking at this chart that's up right now, so our property tax rate is, is in terms of the tax per $100 of assessed value. So you take the, the, you know, total valuation, divide by 100, and multiply by this tax rate to get your property taxes. One thing that we didn't really talk about, but it is important to note, is that tax rate has two components. You'll see over there on the right-hand side on this chart, so the one that's called M&amp;O, that stands for maintenance and operations, and that's the part that comes to the general fund that's used for streets, parks, public safety, that kind of thing. The part that's called INS stands for interest and sinking, and that's the portion that goes to the debt service fund to pay for debt that's supported through property taxes.
And so you have reissuing debt in our, in our budget?
We'll get to that part later, but the, we have the tax rate unchanged on both the maintenance and operation and the debt service side of it for our budget, the working budget that we currently have going.
So you see the significant decrease that occurred in fiscal year, between fiscal year '20 and '21, almost a 3 cent tax reduction.
Would that be equivalent to the no-new revenue rate?
For 2021, we, council adopted the no-new revenue rate. And that's why we have some unused increment, because the no-new revenue rate is lower than the voter approval rate by 2.2 cents last year, so that's our unused increment. All right, so just historically, property tax is about 35% of our general fund revenue, and then this gets into some of these assumptions that we've been talking about. So right now, in the general fund, property tax is budgeted at 10.8 million, so that's taking that preliminary role, which we can actually get updates from the appraisal district on about a weekly or every two-week basis, so this is the latest update they've given us. So we're using their latest role, but it could change depending on how, how those protests go. About 150,000 of our tax revenue is tax revenue from new value.
How much, 150?
Yep.
Oh, right there.
Yep. And, and then we have the assumption in that the tax rate is remaining unchanged at the And like EA talked about, we're trying with very limited information to fill out what this 20-page calculation is going to look like before we actually get the final numbers. And the assumptions that we have right now do show us as under the voter approval rate, but with using some of the increment, with using some of that unused increment.
By keeping the tax rate the same?
Yes.
This assumption says 715,000 or 7.1% increase, does that include that 10, that 715, does that include the 150 in new value?
Yes, it does.
So the net would be 565 if I took those two numbers, right?
Yeah, the portion that is existing versus new, yeah.
And that's with a 7.1 assumed increase.
Yeah, so keeping the tax rate the same and, and the valuations where they currently are, that's what we would have, and that would be including some unused increment.
So the 7.1 is including new value, so really you're saying that it would be like 5.5, something in that, in that line?
Ish, yeah.
And I think it's important to note that it's not a 7.1% increase to the individual property owner, it's to the overall collection.
Correct, right.
Yeah, and you can see from that previous slide, for example, those multifamily units are.
Big portion of that reappraisal.
Right, right.
Yeah, and this, this does, the estimated levy that we have does take into account tax freeze, so the over 65 tax freeze, it also does take into account the exemption information. So certainly there's homestead exemptions in place for anyone whose property is going up more than 10%. It's capped at 10% if they have a homestead exemption.
So this number captures all of that?
Yes, correct.
Jill, now, I, I didn't understand this for a long time, tax freeze. Even if it's a tax freeze, I didn't understand it until Mr. Ramsey was like, it's a tax ceiling.
It's a ceiling, yeah.
So even someone that is on a tax freeze could actually possibly go up to their ceiling. I didn't, until last year, I, I was struggling with that for so long, so you just, when you hit 65, you hit a ceiling, right? So you can go down as, as the rate goes down, and then you can go back up again, but you are always sealed at that number when you hit 65.
Right, yeah, that's correct, and definitely a lot of the, like, truth and taxation trainers and appraisal district people, you know, they would prefer that it be called a tax ceiling instead of a tax freeze, and I'm not sure why the common language is to call it a tax freeze, but it is truly a tax ceiling.
So with that increment, if, if basically you either use all of it or try not to use any of it?
Right, that's, yes, yeah. I know, it's, yeah. And this is going to be the first year that any increment was available, because last year was the very first year to even calculate increment based on that 2019 legislative change. So it's going to be interesting to see how cities handle that.
You can't accrue it anyways over a year, can you?
Three years.
Three years.
Yes, yeah, you get to keep unused increment for three years. So if you didn't use any of it, it would be available the next year, but if you use any of it at all, it all goes to zero, yeah. Which I had to get clarifika, it's, you know, it's not really clear in the tax code how that works, so I've gotten some clarification over the past couple of weeks. This is also something that the legislature has talked about, you know, trying to clarify some things from their 2019 session, and, but so far, there's been no, no change.
I mean, honestly, I didn't even know that, I didn't even know that was a thing. So that's actually kind of a little bit of a relief, you know?
Well, and.
It builds in a little bit of relief so that you're not, you know.
Yeah, and.
Himmed in if something happens, yeah.
And one thing about that unused increment is, you know, if you do use some of that, then you're kind of raising your base for what your no-new revenue rate is going to be the next year.
But if you didn't use any of it, it goes to the state accrues.
No, you keep, you, it just goes away, yeah, it just goes away, yeah.
It's just what's, it's what's available if you choose to use it.
Yeah, just for your tax rate calculation, whether you're able to change your tax rate up or down, it goes into that calculation, but nothing goes to the state if it, if you don't use it, yeah. Yeah, but it is kind of harsh that, you know, if you have 2.2 cents available, you only use one cent, all 2.2 cents goes away. And, yeah, and this doesn't impact school districts, which is the majority of your property taxes, but this impacts cities, so. All right, okay. Any council comments regarding tax rate, our assumptions, valuations, anything like that?
The assumptions, in terms of leaving the tax rate where it is, are we saying that's a high probability?
It's really based off of council feedback, that's where we have set that as a baseline within this proposed budget at this time.
Yeah, but certainly that's, you know, what we want to get councils input on, for sure.
All right, I know, I know you want to get the council's input, but what I'm, I guess I'm putting you on the spot. That looks good with what we know now, to stay with that rate.
Yeah, you know, we, certainly that property tax roll can change pretty significantly over the next month and depending on how these protests go, but it does look good as far as getting our budget balanced. You know, if we keep our property tax rate unchanged, we can certainly present a balanced budget, and it would also allow us, we'll get into this a little bit more as we go into the presentation, but it will allow us to transfer some money to our asset replacement fund, and that's kind of a mechanism that we've had to use before if we, so we have this, you know, separate fund that's kind of a savings account for our vehicles and equipment and some of our bigger purchases like that, and when we don't have enough revenue in the general fund, that's one of the first things that gets cut is any transfer over to that savings account. And so that can work for the current year, that's fine, we can make do, but then you need new vehicles and you don't have any money over there, so it certainly is not a sustainable long-term strategy. So keeping the property tax rate the same, that's one of the, the big advantages there is we can actually move some to the savings account, to the asset replacement account. And same thing with capital projects, you know, we can use money to cash fund capital projects if we, if we leave the tax rate unchanged. Those are, those are the two of the things that are most likely to get cut if you lower the rate.
You pay down your savings.
Yeah, there's been a strong desire, previous councils, to cash fund, and be, have a conservative approach and, and cash fund.
So you get the money up.
Big assets like fire trucks and, and buildings where we can and things of that nature, and build up those savings accounts. To be able to do that and reduce a tax, property tax rate is, is almost impossible to do. And so you'll see as we walk. And so you'll see as we walk through this, that because of property tax reductions that have occurred over the, the near term, that has provided less of an ability to build those savings accounts. And so it's a philosophical question for, for council, but I think it will help as we walk through some of those other asset accounts and some of those other expenditures, and then maybe kind of circle back around to feedback in regards to the property tax rate.
Does that address your question?
Yeah, yeah, it did, it did. And probably we won't need to buy anymore fire trucks or race cars.
Never?
We'll talk about that.
The, you, of course, you said it can change significantly, what was your most recent with the appraisal district, how, how close are they on their, on their protest at this point?
So market value's up like seven point nine percent. The number of protests is down significantly, so last year at this time, they had over four thousand protests filed. This year, they're a little under eighteen hundred, so, yeah, so down significantly. But some of their protests are large dollar value property when you start looking at the multifamily property that is under protest.
That seems to be the one particular category.
We, hopefully not, not at the wire as much as we were last year though.
Right, and, yeah.
Tight.
And last year also, we actually had to go with an estimated property tax roll because they weren't done going through all of those hearings when we got to the end of July. So we didn't even get a final roll until after our budget was out, which was, which was difficult. And it looks like that's not gonna be the case this year, they should be able to, yeah, the, the measure is ninety-five percent. So they need to have ninety-five percent of the valuations set in order to certify the tax roll. And it looks like they should be able to do that by the end of July this year.
So we were to go with the no new revenue tax rate, that would lower what we're actually, what you're actually proposing to us, right?
Yeah, the no new revenue tax rate would definitely lower the tax rate because appraisal values have increased. So, yeah, if your value goes up, your tax rate would have to go down.
So the proposal for us, our recommendation is to not even go with the no new revenue tax rates, keep it the same as the previous fiscal year.
Correct, we have, what we have in the budget at this point is to keep the property tax rate unchanged at the fifty-one sixteen.
I think probably what council keep in mind, providing relief to people due to COVID and the struggles there, I would, you know, want us to consider getting that no new revenue.
I would think we would probably wanna look at the budget and see where everything's built into.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying, just keep that in consideration.
Because we haven't even talked about what's in there.
Just one revenue source.
Yeah, yeah, we're starting with revenues, so that's a good point, we'll get to the expenditures in a minute, but we're starting with revenues and specifically the two largest revenues, property tax and sales tax first, so.
We're ready to move to sales tax?
Alright, okay, Julie's gonna pick sales tax.
Perfect.
So as Amy said, sales tax is our second largest revenue source. That's really important, the growth there, because it does take some burden off of property taxpayers in a way, because other people are then supporting our city needs. So we do a lot of really detailed analysis each month to kind of look at trends and those kind of things. And you can see, by looking at this graph, you can see just historical sales tax revenue there, but then also the percent change. So it's important to see that even though sales tax is growing, the percent change is actually decreasing. So kind of leveling out, if you, if you look at the, the bar on top, you can see that's our percent change. So that's important just when we're doing projections to kind of decide what's that gonna look like going down the road. And that's where that, that analysis comes in each month. So, go ahead.
Just as Julie mentioned, I just wanna add one, I mean, this is one of those big plank items as far as our economic development strategy, right? So certainly, primary jobs are absolutely critical, and those folks who are out there, you know, providing sales tax dollars when they're, with their purchasing power that they're then bringing to this community. But it's absolutely why the city has a very much strong strategy in regards to regional retail, because that does bring in sales tax, it imports those sales tax dollars from outside of just our area, from other adjoining counties that then help us provide revenues to provide services so we can keep a low property tax rate.
But you can see from that top line, it is pretty volatile.
So like your twenty-one estimate, your twenty-two budget, you're projecting a smaller increment change than what, and that's compared to budget or actual, from what we've?
Compared to actual.
This is compared to actuals, okay.
So if you look at the next slide, just to kind of give you some history, you can see in twenty-ten, general fund revenue was twenty-three percent sales tax. So we're, we're estimating that in twenty-two, it's gonna be about twenty-eight percent. So pretty big difference there in what we're bringing in in sales tax and, and good growth. And so, I mean, if you look around, you can see, you know, what's happening in a lot of retailers and, and a lot of bigger retailers that are helping us out. So our assumption is eight point four million dollars in revenue for FY twenty-two. We're using a three percent assumption there, keeping in mind the Federal Reserve estimates about a three point three percent growth. But three percent might seem conservative, but keeping in mind that our top five sales taxpayers account for thirty percent of our revenue. So anything could happen, one, economic downturn, and some of those bigger retailers could lose a lot of money quickly. So we definitely wanna, you know, be on the conservative side would be our suggestion. Knowing that a one percent change, so we're, we're estimating three percent, but one percent change accounts for eighty-two thousand dollars. So for every one percent, we, we move up or down is eighty-two thousand dollars. But it is volatile, and so, you know, four out of the five top sales taxpayers are regional retailers. So keeping that in mind, you know, our estimations could go either way depending on the economy. So that's.
Again, because of that volatility and a stronger reliance, because it's now a bigger percentage of our budget, that also has to certainly weigh into your property tax, you know, rate philosophy. Because it is, obviously, property tax is a much more stable revenue resource for our, our city operations.
And to your question, Kim, so we're looking at what we think twenty twenty-one is gonna come in at, actually, at the end of the year.
Now, from the head of budget.
Yes, because, yeah, significantly, you know, we're like twenty-two percent ahead of budget right now. So we're not looking at budget plus three percent, we're looking at where do we actually think we're gonna end the year, and then three percent growth on top of that.
Remember that we budgeted very conservatively going in this year, certainly with the pandemic, we just didn't know what sales tax was gonna do, what the national economy was gonna do. We're fortunate, you know, I think Kerrville was a, was a winner in regards to being a strong regional retailer and regional retailers that a lot of folks focused on during the pandemic, they were doing home repairs and they were out there. The other thing to remember too is that stimulus dollars have certainly had an effect on this, as those checks have gone into people's pocketbooks, they're out there spending them, which is good, and certainly spurred on the economy, but will that last, right? And when that saccharin goes away.
Well, yeah, I, I, I agree too. But also very encouraged by, by Gil's report with our unemployment rate and, you know, where we are back to, you know, almost pre-COVID levels and the stabilization there and, you know, and, and seeing the reduction in people that are needing to use, I mean, you know, as things, things seem to be recovering and being cautious and conservative is always good.
Absolutely, yeah. We, we felt like a three percent overestimated was both hopeful with where our economy is headed, but also conservative.
Any questions relating to sales tax?
Well, the top five taxpayers, you say of all regional retail.
Four out of our top five.
Four out of five, yeah. As, as you indicated, yeah, that is so significant for us. Local folks shopping there, bringing a whole lot of folks.
Is there an online sales tax?
No, not a specific percentage rate, because there's some, kind of a mixed bag, and, and now that with the new changes, now we have some out-of-state online sales with the Wayfair decision and things like that.
What was the Way?
I'm sorry?
Wayfair?
The Wayfair decision, is that recent? That's from what we.
Yeah, but we're really starting to see.
That was back in the day, like when you used to be able to order things on Amazon and you weren't charged sales tax. And then there was a Supreme Court decision that says internet.
But nothing changed this year in the legislature, right?
That's correct, there were, there were bills in the hopper to potentially change some of the internet rules, but they did not make it out of.
So someone buys warehouse, like, like Wayfair, we get sales tax. If someone buys James Avery where we're producing here, we get sales tax on that too.
Yeah, the James Avery, it's if it's manufactured and shipped from the manufacturing facility within the state of Texas, we get to keep the sales tax for that. And that did not change, even though there was some scare about, there were some bills proposed that would have changed that, but they did not pass, so. Yeah, so that's good for us.
So we're gonna move into more of the expenditure section now, starting with personnel, particularly related to the general fund.
Alright, so these are the assumptions that we currently have built into the budget. So we have a two percent cost of living adjustment and step plan raises for public safety personnel built in. And you'll remember, we talked about the step plan raises before, but that's their every-two-year raise that they get for both fire and police according to a certain schedule. And then we have a three percent average merit raise for general government employees. In twenty twenty-one, there was no merit raise at all for general government employees. And there was no cost of living for public safety employees. And the step plans were initially pushed back, but council reinstated them once our sales tax started coming in better than budget.
So on this average merit raise, because we applied it as a one-time payment, when you're looking at a merit raise, are we going back to that base salary?
It's the base, right.
So we're still, I mean, we're still a little behind, really, right?
Yeah, so there was the two percent one-time lump sum, but that's not part of the base that, that, that this three percent is on.
So it does reset back to basically a compensation level?
So I mean, it almost means like no raise, kind of, sort of. If you, if you include the, if you, well, right, I'm talking like in actuality.
Yeah, if you look at annual income.
If you look at what I have in my bank this year, I got this amount that was not raised, and then I got a payment here, but you're going back to this amount.
Correct.
So then if you add three percent, it's kind of like this payment here.
Particularly when, I think, we look at some of the inflationary factors, that the general economy is factoring in.
Do you feel comfortable with that?
Well, it's a conservative budget, right? I mean, that's, we've got a lot of needs out there.
Because I mean, I mean, that's really what it looks like, is another year with no raise. I mean, I understand that it is a three percent, but dollars in your pocket.
Yeah, well, one of the things we'll talk about here, coming up on one of these slides, is, you know, we had launched off on a compensation study in the twenty nineteen timeframe, and Kim can certainly speak to this more, but we paused because of the pandemic. And we do know, we've been in touch with numerous other comparison communities, they're gonna be launching off on compensations as well, compensation studies as well this next fiscal year, because it is something, we, we don't feel like our data that we got from two years ago is really accurate anymore. And certainly, we're all gonna be looking across the summer on where these numbers land and other folks are making adjustments, but.
So we look to see maybe something come back different in the, in this part right here, once you get the study back?
I think so, yeah.
Well, but that'd be for twenty-three.
Oh! So you're, you're saying for this year?
We're in a little bit of a holding pattern this year until we have better data on where that compensation study's coming through and just how we're kind of rematching up with the new post-pandemic world.
I would like to be able to say that we do more than keep that figure exactly what it was this year.
Yeah, I would like to see what, I mean, what's the cost of that?
So what we can do is we can do some calculations and tell you just what a one percent difference makes on, on general government. You know, and then maybe something council is interested in a COLA for, for general government as well, and we can tell you kind of what those impacts are.
I, I mean, three percent on a, on a normal year is, is perfectly legitimate, I think. But when you're talking a base that didn't get raised a year before, then that makes it a little different.
You could give us some numbers then.
I'll get you some calculations on that.
Next bullet, we, we get a actuarially calculated retirement contribution rate. We just got that new rate and it actually went down a little bit, so don't see that very often. Then I'll talk about pension a, a little bit more later on, but anyway, that went down. And then Kim's gonna talk about the next bullet point.
So we've estimated a five percent increase in health insurance for FY twenty twenty-two. However, that could change, we're gonna do our best at negotiations. But we, we did go out to bid, we advertised for bids on May twenty-fifth and June first, they closed last Friday. We only received one bid for medical, and that was from United Healthcare. Now, we, our current incumbent for our medical is Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they have until tomorrow to present us with their renewal. And so we're anxiously awaiting what that is. The good news is, is that the United Healthcare bid came in at single-digit increase. So we have, we're in, we're in excellent shape for negotiation based on that.
But in the past, our present insurance is.
They've always stepped up.
They've done well before, yes.
And, and we hope they will again, because we've been with them for seven years, so, yeah, we hope that they will again. And, and I, and like I said, you know, the, the United Healthcare came in at single-digit increase, so I think we're in excellent shape for negotiation, negotiations with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Hey, Kim, are you the one that can speak to us on the previous item of the decrease in retirement contribution?
Amy actually has a whole slide on that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get to that in just a minute. One other thing on that health insurance, so right now, we have a five percent increase in as our assumption. This is another one of those things that the timing is always a little difficult, because we don't get that number until pretty much when our budget needs to be finalized. But, but if we're able to come down any from that, you know, that might free up a little bit of us.
Don't think we're gonna go up from the five percent assumptions, that would, I would hope not, so, yeah.
Kim in Arkansas Illinois did a great job on negotiating.
I was gonna say, she did a good job last time.
Absolutely, so, but we have to, we have to put something in it.
Yeah, no, that's good, I'd like to, it'd be great if you put this in.
Absolutely.
Yes.
You know, I, I remember last year, it was hard to get Kim to stop smiling, I could put this great deal together.
Alright, and then we also have our police department looking at some potential recruiting and retention strategies that, that may be added in.
So we're still working with that, chief and finance and HR are working through different options, kind of looking at our pay grade. We're doing a little bit of a mini compensation study, looking at area comparisons, just making sure we're, we're within the market, right? We want recruitment and retention is key for us, and so obviously, that's a big factor in that. So we'll be coming, we don't have a fully outlined plan on that now, but we have at least filled in some degree of, of element within this budget.
Are both police and fire pretty much at where they should be as far as numbers?
Yeah, so it's gonna be one of the things that we looked at within the, the overall bigger picture compensation study. We feel like at, at this point, we're, we're, there, there is a little bit of a different element between the recruitment and retention issue that we're basing between the two different entities.
Right now, we have more vacancies at the police department than the fire department. Alright, speaking of fire. Okay, so this slide is gonna tell you about personnel changes as far as number of employees. And Chief Maloney's gonna talk to you about the first bullet here.
Okay.
Royal B, just talking, the one new FTE for the EMS employee. So we identified some opportunities and gaps as chief of what we want the organization to look like. And one of those, we did staffing for what we call the lead paramedic, I've heard that, that's an assignment. It's not a new position, but it's an assignment paid for that. And one of the things we're working toward is trying to get more availability at the paramedic to provide services to the community, provide services internal and external for that. And so we're requesting one FTE for the EMS employee. So that would improve our flexibility of staffing for fire rescue EMS twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. It would improve our capacity to respond to calls by about thirty-seven hundred hours and then create opportunities to stamp that lead paramedic additional shifts to respond to emergency calls, support EMS. And this is building toward the future of that mobile integrated health program of what we talked, this is not the mobile integrated health, but it does build a step forward for that, because they are more available to respond. Right now, they're assigned to an ambulance is where they are, so if they have that opportunity, then they could still be on an ambulance. This will give that in the evening. This will give that in the evening, evening hours, they should have more availability to respond and provide services.
So you said there is a lead paramedic position already?
We have three lead paramedic assigned, assignments is what we currently have. So our fire, we have three firefighter paramedics that also are assigned as lead paramedic, so they do both roles. So they work on the.
You have three, so that they cover the three shifts?
Correct, correct. So that, that we have one assigned to each shift, A, B, and C shift.
So you'd be adding one that is more general in nature?
Yes, it would be general to try to help get them reassigned from the ambulance on to a more of a response vehicle so that they can provide those services out there and help support EMS. It's one of the biggest gaps we kind of saw, especially with my promotion to chief, that was my role as the EMS piece. And so this helps kind of bridge that gap as far as the EMS administrative, some of the EMS administrative duties. Plus, it helps with a lot of the transition we're seeing with the paramedic programs for now, post-COVID, online. We have a hundred percent paramedic program that is online. So we're able to support that with our lead paramedics being a point person between them and the university. And so they're able to provide some of the skills and some of the other key education pieces for that. So this helps, and this is one of those that would be really kind of bridge that gap for there.
Looking at the fire department's calls, it's something greater than ninety percent are EMS calls, correct?
Correct. So we're somewhere around ninety-five percent are medical-related compared to that.
Are y'all back up pre-COVID numbers yet on your responses?
We are, so we are seeing more, it's interesting. So some of that, you know, we're seeing more than non-emergency calls are increasing. So our emergency remains about the same, but we're seeing those non-emergencies increasing. Same with the hospitals, we had that last week, talking about that. And they're starting to see those pre-COVID numbers, and ED also returning to.
Back to business.
Correct.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Alright, so that's the one new EMS employee. We also have half-year funding in for one new employee in streets. This is a heavy equipment operator position. This is a position that we used to have, but was taken out in 2019. So it's adding that heavy equipment operator position back in.
No, it just, you know, continued, you know, obviously, we've heard feedback, council on continuing to be strong on streets and out there and doing street maintenance activity. And we've honed in on that, I think, on exactly what our street folks are doing and what their category of work is. As you recall, a lot of the different maintenance techniques have been outsourced to some different elements, whether that's slurry sealing or crack sealing, or doing the more heavy reconstruction work. And we've really focused our crews in additional multitude of prep work, doing the milling and overlaying. And so as we calibrated on that, we realized that we cut a little thin on that heavy operator, heavy equipment operator position. So this is really looking at putting this back in there so we can be most efficient in that service delivery component.
So why half-year?
So, uh, street paving season, right? So we were trying to be conservative within the budget. We really don't need the position. We may advertise a little bit in advance of it, but we don't do milling overlay work during the winter months. And so we feel like we can hold until we're going into the spring when we're going to need them. And it may be an internal promotion that's moving into that role, and then, you know, actually, you know, kind of backfilling. So, but we won't need them. That's our prime paving season.
I was gonna say, can you find somebody for a half-year, but if you do internal and move them in, then that explains.
So then going forward, we'll have that built in for the full year.
Correct, it would be four years there.
It'll just be this year, we're starting at half.
We felt like a half-year, we could, we could work that in.
Right, so this, he or she would be operating our equipment?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
With that, is there any chance that we cut down while we're having to contract out?
Um, it's going to make us faster on the milling and overlay component, and so we'll be able to get more work done and get to that work rather than contracting it specifically. We've found that we get the most bang for the buck with our internal crews on that milling and overlay work. But we'll be able to get to more of it in a quicker fashion.
Then the next two bullets relate to kind of the same thing. But when you start looking at the budget and you see these FTE, so that's full-time equivalent number of employees, you'll see that the number of employees is going up from 2021 to 2022. But a lot of it relates to these last two bullets. And basically, it's kind of like what Kim was just talking about. We had partial year positions in, in '21, and those partial year positions are going to become full-year positions in '22. And we went into '21 knowing that we needed these positions, but, you know, this time last year, the economy was officially in a recession, and we didn't feel comfortable committing to full-year positions when we didn't know what, how quickly we'd come out of the recession, that kind of thing. But anyway, you know, we have come out of the recession, things are looking good. And these positions that were partially funded in the current year are being funded for the entire year.
And is it already filled?
They're not already, some of them aren't, some of them are not.
Yeah, like the assistance.
The ones that aren't filled are being actively recruited right now. So some of them, as you'll see, may have only been budgeted at three months. So we're getting towards the back half of the year, and so we're going through active recruitment process.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that first bullet point there are the new positions. The last one is, you'll remember, last year, we implemented a hiring chill. So when we lost people just to normal attrition, we said, okay, we're not going to hire yet. And so we had these streets and parks positions that were on a chill.
What would this bring us to in total employees?
I'll, I'll look that up for you.
Is that three thirty, I believe, maybe it's just a hair less than that?
Yeah, I think it's a little less than that. I'll look that up though for you while we're, while we're going through this. A couple of things on pensions. So this is what the mayor was asking about a few minutes ago. So this pension rate has decreased from ten point seven three down to ten point six five. The decrease is primarily due to better-than-forecast investment returns. So the way that pensions work are, you know, we have all these assumptions about what, you know, how long people are going to live and when people are going to retire and that kind of thing. And one of the assumptions is when we invest the money, what's the rate of return going to be? And so the assumption, our base rate assumption is that six point seven five percent is going to be the investment return for the pension plan. Last year, the rate of return was a little over seven percent, so it was better than that six point seven five percent. So that reduces our overall rate. Just a couple of quick things about our pension plan. So it's, it's a pension plan through TMRS, Texas Municipal Retirement System. And the city of Kerrville's plan is ninety-one point five percent funded and has eighty-five million dollars in assets. And that's excellent, that's excellent in terms of pension plans. TMRS, just in general, is a, is a really well-run pension plan. There's eight hundred and ninety-five member cities and overall eighty-nine point five percent funded for all of those member cities. And so you hear these, you know, crazy stories about Detroit and, you know, places like that, and that's not Kerrville. We're in excellent shape on our pension plan. Does that address the questions you had?
So in the way TMRS works, some of the larger Texas cities aren't necessarily a part of that, Dallas, Austin, Houston. But the vast majority of cities our size and kind of the medium to smaller-sized cities are members of TMRS. And so it's a very strong system, it's a very stable system. They've been very savvy in the way that they've invested over time and they were fortunate in that they're, they're seeing good returns. And that's helped us to be able to reduce the annual amount over this next year that we have to contribute. Very strong system, as you can see from these percentages, and very, a system that is very well-funded.
It's always interesting to me how actuaries figure the expiration date on people.
How they call it that, yeah.
Exact science, yeah. So moving into street funding, we wanted to take a couple of slides just to really emphasize this element within the general fund, because it is such a heavy portion, and it is an element that has been heavily emphasized both by the community and then translated via the council to the annual budget process. And so this budget contemplates an increase in street maintenance funding of, to a total amount of two point oh five million. That's up from one point eight million, so this is a budget that continues to be strong on streets. And that, I want to make sure that the council understands, this is not street department funding. This is street maintenance funding. So this is, the, the street department has a higher number than this, but this is the number that is literally being allocated purely to street maintenance activities, so.
This is the recommended number from our?
Correct, correct. In fact, it's a little higher.
It is higher.
As a recommended number that was indicated within the pavement management plan that was adopted by council a couple of years ago, yeah. As you recall, there've been, council has made a number of kind of annual increases over those years. And so, yes, this does get us actually.
It's still not planned.
Correct.
Perfect.
That's correct. This, towards that two point oh five million, essentially, it makes a number of assumptions. Four percent street use fee from the water fund, budgeted at five hundred and forty-seven thousand.
That's a new fee?
No, in fact, we've had that street use fee for a number of years. You know, as you recall, we've got a number of utilities, one of whom we just happen to own and operate. But they, they go out there and they run big trucks on our streets, and they tear up our streets, and they cut our streets. And, and so we, we ask them to send us a little bit of coin so we can go repair those streets. And whether that's K-Pub or Atmos or our water sewer utility. This one is specific to the, the water, the water utility that we run.
Okay, yeah, so that's the payer. That's not, that's not, that's not the allocation. That doesn't go to everyone. That goes to the large.
Yeah, this is four percent of total water fund revenues.
Right.
Okay, but not everybody's paying that fee, or we are, we are all paying, yeah.
Yeah, because, yeah, when we look at the water fund budget, it's basically an expense for the water.
We take four percent and put it over, okay, okay, alright. But we're not being charged that as a paying customer?
Not directly, it's built into the overall rate. That's correct.
It's not a separate fee.
It is up a little bit. It's five hundred and twenty-two thousand this year. Five forty-seven is what we're estimating for '22, but that's just based on our water fund revenue changing a little bit.
And so this is a transfer? Is that what you're saying?
Transfer, correct. Solidway surcharge increase is new, so we have a surcharge right now for the collection at, it's basically a tipping fee at the existing transfer station. So we, we are honing in on exactly where that rate would fall within the overall structure. But we would anticipate that there would be a transfer from that solidway surcharge to streets for two hundred and fifty thousand. You know, again, this is one of those elements, we talked to council a little bit about it earlier in the spring. A lot of communities have an actual commercial surcharge that's applied to commercial rate customers, because we don't have a specific franchise agreement. What we felt like, given our circumstances and the high market share that really is attained by, you know, one, one hauler right now, that we could better, we could be more across the board in just adjusting the existing tipping fee and that surcharge that's happening at the transfer station, because we have the transfer station within our community.
So I don't under, I, I, can you remind me again about the, the surcharge to commercial haulers? Is this for payers to, commercial payers to Republic? Or this is the payer, this is the commercial services that aren't from Republic that are doing? I can't remem, I know we've talked about it, I just don't remember.
It's basically everybody, all the commercial haulers that come across the scale.
So Republic and then all of the other smaller ones that are, and we're not currently.
Absolutely.
We're not currently doing that.
So that way, it doesn't, it basically, you know, by not having a franchise agreement, it wouldn't provide any exclusivity to any of those entities. But they all, in coming to our transfer station, they're all utilizing our roadways, right? And so they're all utilizing our streets, and they're all tearing up our streets. And so we felt like this was the most equitable way for those haulers to be able to help pay for street maintenance activities.
And so other than Republic, how many do we have? This is.
Yeah, it's about five or six.
So though, I mean, ultimately, will it be passed on yet? What, but, but for us, we're considering those the payers?
That's correct.
That are going to generate two fifty that we don't have now?
That, that's our estimate, right, based off of existing data of what those folks are tonnage that they're bringing across.
And then we'll transfer that to streets.
That's correct.
And so right now, everyone who goes across the scale pays a surcharge, thirteen dollars a ton. This would just be an additional surcharge just for those commercial waste haulers that other, you know, just a private residential homeowner doesn't have to pay or whatever.
So we show up, we're not paying it?
Right.
And as you recall, council changed this rate about three years ago, I believe. And so this is, this is another rate change that we're now proposing. That really would be pretty much solely funding this transfer over. So wanted to just clarify, make sure, you know, we talked about general fund and that maintenance activity.
Sorry.
Sure.
So is this going to be reflected in our fee schedule when we look at fee schedules?
Yeah, and we'll be, we anticipate bringing the fee schedule to you, really, it's in entirety at the next budget workshop in July. So, and that'll have a host of different ones, but it will be indicated in there.
Hey, guy that has a record service here said, hey, you need to look at how you, how you do the fees for wrecker services. We didn't pursue it, I hadn't pursued it, but would that be a part of what we'll see later in fees?
It's certainly an element that we can help clarify at the next budget workshop. Chief can, can speak to some of the policies that we have in regards to wrecker services. So with street funding, this is, we just wanted to slide to remind folks to kind of differentiate between the street maintenance activity and the street reconstruction activity. So street reconstruction is almost primarily, at least the most recent, street reconstruction efforts have been debt-funded. That, basically, we've got about two point four million that has left and has been allocated within fiscal year '22 for the actual, you know, these various efforts. Some of these are going to be occurring in, you know, the ones at least indicated on this map, as you all recall. And those contracts have been awarded to looking at reconstruction efforts that'll be occurring over the summer and then going into the fall. Construction projects, as you know, occur in multiple fiscal years typically. And so, and that's just kind of the nature of, of capital funding. But we do have about two point four million that's left, and we do anticipate that to be completely spent within the fiscal year '22 timeframe.
Is that in addition to two point oh five?
That's correct. That's the street maintenance activity that's really more related to crack seal, slurry seal, milling overlay. That's really more maintenance.
Okay, this is the whole reconstruction.
Yeah, it's basically a full-blown redone street.
So we're spending four point four, five million dollars on streets?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct, which is a very, in my opinion, a significant level of, of our general fund.
And additional money for drainage too, which is.
Doesn't even factor in anymore.
Yeah, which is somewhat related to streets.
And just as an aside, Westminster is going to be, that's drainage on Westminster.
So Westminster is actually a significant level. There are some drainage concerns there. There's significant level of utility concerns. As you, as you recall, we, we pulled back, Westminster was identified within the eighteen nineteen pavement management plan for street reconstruction. As we began to explore, we realized there's also utility issues. And what we didn't want to do was go build a brand-new road on top of some poor utility situations that we knew we were going to have to correct in the near term, and then go tear up a brand-new road, right? So what we said is, okay, let's hold on, let's pause. As you remember, council just recently awarded an engineering contract to basically redo that entirety. So not only full reconstruction, but also redoing the utility work underneath. And so it'll be a bigger project than was originally anticipated within the pavement management plan. But when we get done, that whole section will be, should be good, hopefully, for twenty, thirty years. Um, I'll have to check and see where the engineering's at. I think we just let that engineering contract maybe the last six weeks. So I'm hopeful that we will have, we'll be able to get that project out on the street this summer.
Yeah, remember, because we were talking about how school was going to start and all that fun stuff was going to happen, yeah.
Yeah, we're pushing the engineering as fast as we can, yeah. Yeah, we understand the street.
Peterson's going to start, tardy bells at seven twenty-five this year.
Remind me how much of that funding we spent in this past fiscal year? This, the one we're in right now for the reconstruction of streets?
I'll have to get that number for you. I don't have a.
Okay, thank you.
We spent it over three years. This is the third year.
Correct.
And this will be the balance.
That's right. So just moving through on kind of some remaining street items, just kind of wrapping it up here on new budget items funded. Again, this does anticipate a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase to pavement management line item. It does restore the heavy equipment operator position we talked about before. It does provide a generator for our streets building. As you recall, that ended up being one of our chief headquarters during the storm event, really for quite a bit of our field operations in, in having a place to be and kind of get out of the cold and have warmth and be able to continue to provide those emergency operations to keep our streets open.
Yeah, and speaking of generators, what about all the backup generators? Is there anything built in for any of that, or is this the one generator we're building in for this year?
This is the one that we built into within our operational funding. Certainly, we're continuing to. Uh, certainly, we're continuing to look at grant opportunities that may be able to provide us, uh, backup generators and other opportunities for other types of facilities.
Are we gonna see anything new in here that reflects on, on the storm-related, um, kind of breakdown and what maybe our needs are that we want to take care of? I mean, because we talked about generators and having to move generators and backup generators and that's just, I know, that's just what reminded me in this.
Yeah, we, we've had a number of departments that, it's absolutely been a conversation.
So they've put it into their department budgets?
Absolutely.
The, uh, yeah, and, and the water plant difficulties we face, uh, where are we on that?
Water plant difficulties?
Yeah, the, the effects of freezing.
The pipes and all.
Digging up the pipes and.
Right, right, yeah, so, you know, we were fortunate that we did not necessarily have a lot of pipe damage, uh, compared to many communities. Um, you know, we've, we've handled that essentially within our operational, uh, components this fiscal year and being able to make those repairs. Um, we continue to look at elements to harden, uh, from a, a security standpoint, as well as a resiliency standpoint, uh, on different facilities that, you know, we can enhance that resilience.
You know, I, I don't, not to, not, I don't want to create a whole lot of extra work, but since this is already being planned, it would be good just to see, because we talked about, after the storm was over, we talked about what a great response we had to the storm, by all accounts, um, couldn't be more pleased with what happened. We also kind of talked about learning from that storm. And I would just be curious to see what maybe has been incorporated into budgets or thoughts about what maybe we need to build in, just so we know as a council. You know, these are things that are, have changed because we want to have, make sure that we have the preparations for the, you know, the emergency management that we need.
Yeah, and to expand on that, you, you met with, uh, the, the residents from the summit to address how to do things differently next time. Was there, I mean, what, 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 what came from that, anything at all?
Yeah, I, I think it might be good for us to kind of come in and do a recap and we can certainly have, uh, you know, departments kind of talk about some different.
Just to pull in the items.
Yeah.
Sure.
So I just, you know, I know that that's been considered, it'd be nice to, for us to say, okay, this is what y'all seen.
Try to encapsulate that maybe within a workshop session and, and really talk through that.
But you did a, you did a PowerPoint for that meeting with the summit, um, and, uh, yeah, I don't know if we, I don't know if we need to see it, but that info would be good, as you indicated, because folks are, folks are gonna ask, okay, what if this happens again? You know, have we been prudent in, in our planning?
Yeah, and if we see something as a council that we're, we feel like maybe there is something else that we want to consider building into the budget, you know, based on what you're saying. And maybe someone wants, maybe there's something we should, maybe we should consider that's not in the budget that here are some additional items that, you know, we didn't build in, but, you know, these would be beneficial, um, that kind of thing.
Sure, absolutely.
And, um, just to address your question about streets, um, so, so far this year on the street reconstruction side, um, we spent almost two point one million, we're looking at close to five million, um, by the time we get to the end of the fiscal year, because we're just getting into the really heavy.
Five point how much?
Um, about five million dollars is, um, is what we're estimating for the entire, no, for the entire fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty one.
You're talking about the reconstruction efforts?
The reconstruction portion, yes.
Maintenance.
So there's another one point eight really in maintenance that's added on to that this fiscal year.
Right, yeah, this is just the, the debt money, the reconstruction.
Gotcha, correct.
Okay, thank you. And again, some of that's timing, right, on when it's actually deployed and when does it occur in the summer? Do we get all the way through in September, does somebody care over October, you know? Correct, correct. So, and then just kind of wrapping through these, uh, last few bullet items in relation to, uh, street item funding. Uh, we do have some very small, uh, elements, uh, just, uh, related to high-water warning systems, school zone pedestrian improvements and, uh, speed display signs, certainly, uh, you all have seen us deploy a number of these. Uh, these, these aren't necessarily new items, we, we've had some of these that we've been deploying this year. I'm really kind of honing in on what technologies are good and what, what, uh, effective techniques there. And so, just want to let you know that we are continuing to budget these types of items, uh, within our streets department, uh, and so that way we can deploy them out in the community, because they've been very well received.
Wait, this is, says new budget items funded, the lead paramedic, emergency notifications sys- system.
This is, this is the next phase.
I'm sorry, I'm ahead, okay. Oh, sorry, I thought you were going to ask for me.
That's a good segue, Julie's gonna jump in on new budget items unless we have some questions.
I was like, I felt like I missed that whole thing, but it hasn't happened yet.
Well, the street display, uh, speed display items, a prime spot for that is Triner Street through the Doyle area.
Okay.
I mean, because, I mean, I've seen folks pile up to fifty miles an hour, I bet. And you got a, you got a lot of kids on the streets. People say, well, the police can patrol it, we can have a, a patrol car out there all the time.
And on the, on the high-water warning, is that a? Tell me, what is that?
Yeah, so a lot, we, we have these on some high-water areas already. Um, and so, some of these are enhancements to, uh, to be able to have, uh, other flashing signals or other elements that may have actual sensors on them. Um, and some may be in areas that are deployed that, that don't really have much signalization there at all right now, so. Uh, and they're just triggered when we have basically drainage that, that's, you know, going over a streetway. Uh, in particular, you know, we've got several streets that, you know, when, when those high-water creeks come up, it doesn't, not happen often, but when they do, um, you know, they do pro- provide a roadway hazard. A lot of times our streets crews are then having to go out, a lot of times in the middle of the night. So there's already an operational expense that they're having to deploy barricades or other things, or some of our public safety personnel. And so, the hope is that some of these elements will be automated, be, be, give signals to road, ro- uh, to motorists, basically, not to be able to cross.
Yeah, there's been some, some concern, um, over singing wind and that area with the new middle school and the speed of vehicles, you know.
That's a wide road.
Yes, uh, do you know if there's any plans to address that at all?
With roadway speed?
Yes.
Um, it's something we can look at.
Okay.
What is, what, what are the school zone pedestrian improvements, what are those?
So, that's a mix, uh, you know, as, as you recall, we have, um, gone through, really trying to do a diligent job about going in, making sure that both those markings are well-marked, uh, on the crossing elements. And so, uh, replacing, uh, a lot of the paint that goes away very quickly with thermoplastic, uh, paint and some other elements, as well as better signage.
So basically, you, y'all have gone out, streets has gone out and identified what needs to be done and budgeted.
This has an allocation, certainly, it's not a clean sweep across the entirety of the community, but, um, this does provide a stronger degree of, of funding towards that effort so we can be more diligent in being systematic, uh, in those improvements.
Now the next page.
Okay, well, we get to this, um, I wanted to go back to the mayor's question about, um, FTE. So, um, we have, this is, um, in total for twenty two, we have three hundred and twenty five point five FTE budgeted. So that's up from three nineteen point seven five and the, the difference is those positions that were outlined on that slide.
Okay, so moving on to the next, um, oh, let's see, I'm skipping ahead, that's a replacement. Okay, so, remaining, uh, new budget items, um, that are proposed, um, some we've already talked about. So the new position, um, the lead paramedic position in EMS, uh, is one of those which Chief Maloney already talked about. Um, we are proposing a, um, emergency notification system, it'll be somewhat like a reverse nine-one-one. It's actually a company name, what the company name we would use, um, is really unknown at this point. Um, just another notification system for emergencies in the community.
What does that mean, like a pushing out, like texting type?
Is that like similar to the, I think the county uses Code Red?
The Code Red.
Is that similar?
It's similar to that and, and depending on what company, um, was chosen, what might depend on what capabilities were out there as far as notification systems.
Or that would give us internally, uh, the ability, certainly, either one of the chiefs, feel free to chime in here, but it would give us the ability to, uh, have more control within our own operations on being able to deploy those as needed, uh, for a host of operations, not just emergency operations, but also, uh, you know, community events or other activities.
Is that an opt-in thing? I don't know how it works.
Correct, yeah, it would be an opt-in thing and would also give us the ability to very granular, uh, basically create a geofence. So we could get down to the street level on the, the ability to deploy that and deploy it in a much more quick timeframe. There is some lag within existing Code Red system, uh, on, in the way that it rolls through. And so, um, sometimes what we've noticed through recent, uh, emergency events is that sometimes folks get notified six or seven hours, in fact, after an event occurs. And so, uh, we feel like we're exploring some products that would be able to be deployed much more quickly, uh, and with a much more granularity to be able to, to really hone in on activities.
Is there any thought, and this may be out there, but because the county already uses a system like this, talking with the county and seeing if they want to work jointly to do this? I mean, the county includes the city, so we can work with them and if they're willing to go with a different service provider that we're looking at doing, um, and maybe we can even get the cost down at that, have we considered something like that?
I don't know, if either one of the chiefs want to speak through, you know, you've been exploring different products. Not sure in regards to the, uh, to the counties, I know the Code Red system has its limitations. The ones that, uh, we've seen on the, I can move up any of the two dollars, okay? So, but the ones that we've seen with the demonstration provides more of a situational wear, uh, internally and externally quicker. So, so we can provide that information to our citizens inside the city. So, within minutes to, you know, thirty minutes as opposed to potentially up to six hours. Plus, it also provides services for our internal customers too, so, for us. So, from an emergency management standpoint, uh, it's really impressive what, what it can do, what, what some of these services can do now. And so we can make more people situational aware here, emergency management, we need to respond, finding availability. Um, and we can drill down even more from that, or PD, or fire, or streets, so, uh, a lot of potential. But that have, have not had the conversation with the county in regards to their system or, uh, joined with us. But we've just seen those capabilities and limitations with the Code Red.
Okay.
So, but they come a long ways, since the Code Red went online, I don't remember, a long time ago.
Right.
So, and we're using one, and citizens are getting used to it, that is a means of communication. So, that also helps the, the, the summit, that helps people to have it, I mean, there's still some limitations with that one, that's out of your service. But it does allow us to geofence, really kind of notify communities of numerous things outside emergency management. Outside just, uh, uh, more situational awareness, you know, and chief.
Yeah, this, this is, uh, this is one of the items that we identified through, through the storm as, uh, as an area that, uh, that we needed to find a solution for. Uh, we, we had difficulties reaching out and communicating with citizens that they were trying to get water through your area or we know this is a problem in your area, we had no ability to do that, uh, through individual areas. So, uh, as we were talking about, you know, lessons learned in storms, definitely one of those that, uh, that we lash onto in our local council.
Do y'all run this jointly, or it runs through a dispatcher, or y'all figure that out?
Yeah, you know.
But y'all will be in on this together?
We'll have a policy across the organization, because again, it may not just be only emergency operations, right? It may be other elements that we, that we add into that.
So we got a lot of, we got a lot of entities already kind of.
A lot of different departments that they can have use within for this type of system. And so, uh, we'll have, we'll have a organizational-wide policy in regards to its use.
Now, inter- internal, uh, is, is there some advantage for both departments to, to the system that we're looking at, where you could communicate, well, I don't know, you communicate or get something out that fire needs to know, would that, is that possible with this system?
Absolutely, it's very robust on, on what they can do and what they can provide. So, uh, you can choose groups, you can set up groups, uh, whether myself and chief, uh, how we can drill down for that, whether it be the Fourth of July event, we just strictly want to identify those to streets and get information to them, whether we want to do parks, PD, including fire, uh, whether it be our di team, or, or di team operations, uh, when it's on streets. So there's a lot of potential for us, use for this beyond just the, the one emergency management event. But it is, it would be used.
Sounds pretty flexible.
It really is, it really is, and, and very impressive, you know, it both is.
So are you looking at one or are there several to look at, or?
So, th- there's a multitude of platforms to look at out there, and, uh, I think IT's really kind of leading the charge on, on trying to identify what's right for the city, uh, you know, being able to do those mass communications, uh, touch budget groups is really what we're looking for. I know we, you know, you talked a lot to daily usage, you know, we would utilize that internally likely for mass notifications and where you can do mass call-out, uh, recall people back in, you know, to deploy our SOU team, uh, those kind of things.
Yeah.
Gives us a kind of one, one-touch location, and, uh, we can do that through.
Well, and I hear, uh, Mr. Garcia's point of, you know, there is a system out there now, county is using, you know, how, how do we cooperate? But it sounds like this is a system that's just.
More than just pushing out messages to citizens.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree, the need is there.
Yeah.
Sure, uh, and that's why I was wondering if we did have any conversations with the county, uh, and that we can work jointly on this, if they would be willing to, you know, probably use a service that we're looking at using, because it can provide more. I don't know, just something for the future, probably, on doing that.
And certainly can have some conversations, I, I think they've invested in the Code Red system at this point, but we'll, we'll see when they're asking some of those contracts.
Yeah.
They really don't do a lot with Code Red other than COVID right now.
It's not, yeah, and that's what I'm thinking, if we can kind of extend out a hand and say, hey, look, we're looking at this service and we can work jointly together to get the word out to not only county or not only city, and to use one service for everybody, you know?
As long as the city's in charge.
We, we certainly want to be in control of our system and our communication.
Right, yeah.
So, moving to bullet three on.
Okay, so, we, yeah, we talked a little bit about this earlier, but, um, just an increase there in training recruitment and, and retention for our police department, um, we talked about that a little bit earlier. Um, one thing we haven't talked about is that next item, which is a computer station that would actually be housed at the sheriff's office. Um, and that would just allow, um, officers to actually have a physical booking and administrative station at the sheriff's office. So if something goes down at PD, they now have a backup at the sheriff's office. And then they're also not going back and forth to do their bookings and administrative work, which now is only located at the PD, so the.
Only using, but being used by the city?
That's correct, that's my understanding.
So it's not a cost-sharing thing, it's for city?
Correct, it would be specifically for our PD officers.
Did you, you may want to.
Something to add on efficiency elements?
Right.
So, beyond that, this connection would give us a couple of, uh, a couple of opportunities. Uh, one of those is we currently don't have a backup location for our dispatch center. If our dispatch center goes down, the last time they evacuated the building, they were staying out in Parkville, handheld radio, trying to, to dispatch units and continue business. Uh, uh, we need, we need a redundant location for our dispatch, if it goes down, this gives us a connection so that we flip a switch. Uh, we already have set up, where we flip switch for nine-one-one, it goes there, now this sends the rest of our systems there as well and gives us a, uh, a, a console there that we can step into and start running our operations.
So nine-one-one are, uh, goes to sheriffs already?
Uh, no, it comes to us, but we have a backup redundancy. If, uh, if something goes down with our telephone system, it will automatically roll over and begin going to, to the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
Uh, it also, uh, as Julie was, uh, referring, this connection also gives us the ability to book in the jail. Uh, currently, we're touching three different systems every time we go into the jail to book someone, it's very inefficient.
How's that work?
I'm sorry.
How does it work?
Uh, so, no, this is, this, this takes our system, our current records management system and gives us a direct connection back to the police department so that we can do that work within our system and communicate with the county system at that point.
Not having to physically go back to.
Going back to the, the training, recruitment and retention increase from the police department. Is there any money set aside for, um, uh, matching that grant or the, the donations that you've received for a canine unit?
Uh, no, ma'am.
So is there anything, any talk at all about trying to provide one of those?
So, other than the grant component, eh, not matching it at this piece, but I think we've talked through, uh, you know, the initiation of, of that effort, uh, within police within the next fiscal year.
So, I know the Elks donated, right, y'all donated money, and then you set up a nonprofit, right? And so, you, where are you in the funding?
So, we're, uh, we're probably about a quarter of the way to where we need to be for, uh, for a unit. Uh, my understanding is the Lions Club is fixing to give, uh, give us another donation here at the end of the month, so we're, we're building towards that. Um, we're, we're in a position, uh, where we currently, with the Elks' money, we're, we're in a position where we can buy the dog and train the officer. Uh, from there, we still need the equipment that goes along with that, the vehicle, the containment system, kennels at home, uh, training gear and equipment, uh, and then, uh, vegetarian funds to, to maintain the animal itself.
And you feel like, through the nonprofit, that you'll get where you need to be with, with funding coming from the community?
Uh I would hope so. I I would think at some point, we're probably going to have to look internally at some type of a match to that to get over that hump. Or or look internally at operations and try to figure out a way to fill that.
Are we getting the word out to the different groups and?
You know, I don't know that I'm doing a real good job with that. I'm not, uh fundraising is kind of a a foreign thing to me as police chief. Feels like something I don't need to be a real part of. You know, it's kind of in the background kinda thing. Uh so, uh you know, really looking for a way. I know, I know we've had help from uh folks in the community. Uh Bill Bill has gone and gone out and touched some uh businesses and things for us, uh trying to to help get additional funding from them. Uh thank you for that. Appreciate that help. Um uh but uh we're we're working. Uh through as many channels as we can to try to get that program on. Uh as we've discussed, we have identified so many basic needs. That we need to correct and fill and and get up. It's difficult to, it's difficult for me to say, hey, I really need to divert funding right now to K nine program. From from internal uh tax funding when we need uh basic equipment brought up to standards. So.
Chief, you might, the Rotary Club is one that we could, I don't know, that we could, could talk to. Cause each unit is what, about seventy grand?
So, uh for each dog, yeah, you're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of about seventy five thousand uh to get it up and running. A dog vehicle and all of the equipment that you'd need to go along.
Yeah, cause I sure would like to see at least one unit this year.
My, yeah, my goal is to to have that up this year at some.
Uh chief, um uh there's probably be a quick answer, but. Are, how are we doing in terms of compensation for our officers? So that they're not getting picked off by San Antonio or Austin or somewhere else?
Uh that's part of what we're looking at through through our retention and compensation uh program right now, the the conversations that we're having. Uh trying to, trying to put us into a position where uh where we can maintain competitiveness in the market and recruiting as well as. Simultaneously maintain competitiveness in the retention and keeping our folks here.
Okay, okay, good, good. All right. Uh we've got eight more pages. And less than thirty minutes.
I can do it. We can do it. Okay. Um just a couple more things on this new budget item. So. Increase transfer asset replacement, which we'll talk about a lot more specifically as we go through this. Um citizen survey. So, it's been in FY twenty two, it would have been three years since we did our last one. And we had a lot of, I feel like valuable input from the last one. So. Looking at using the same company that so that we can compare apples to apples, use the same kind of questions and those kinda things. Cause that's where a lot of our street and drainage concerns came from. So, we think it's important. It's been long enough. So, we need to do another, another citizen survey. And then we talked about the compensa- compensation study that we kinda put a pause on um due to COVID. So, we're gonna have finalizing that.
So, moving quickly to general asset replacement off of the next few slides. Uh as we mentioned at the beginning of this conversation, this is a separate fund. It essentially acts as a savings account for cash funding. Uh different uh larger type asset purchases such as vehicles and equipment. It's everything from IT servers, which may be, you know, ten to fifty thousand dollars up to uh one point five plus million dollar. Uh fire apparatus. So, uh it does, uh the funding source essentially are cash transfers from the general fund. Um this helps uh you know, reduce the tax rate, uh reducing the tax rate uh results in lower transfers, right? And so, um because of cash funding, it's it's gotta, the cash has to come from somewhere, right? So, annual budget transfers in fiscal year twenty one, um because of of the the fiscal constraints we had, we really did not have that budgeted in for this year. Uh for fiscal year twenty two, we budget it right now four hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, we're trying to help build that savings account back up. So, recall that, um because we we have had some year-end transfers, some of this was uh stimulus related, right? So, uh fiscal year twenty, um we did transfer over one point four five million. Uh and then we don't know, we don't know where we're gonna end up this year, right? So, we always try to be very uh conservative in our approach and operational spending throughout the year. It's not a. Our departments are great about, you know, they don't just go out there and they've got a little bit of allocation left, and so they go spend it real quick and stock up the the closet. Uh that's not what they do. They return those funds if they're they're unutilized and they're very cognizant about that. And so. Uh we do typically have a year-end transfer that we are able to put and we use, do typically move it either into asset replacement or capital uh project funding.
Any kinda estimation of what that is?
We we really don't at this point. We're we're just not sure for fiscal year twenty one where we'll we'll end up. Um I will say that, you know, just as an order of magnitude, our vehicle and equipment depreciation for fiscal year twenty is about nine hundred and seventy three thousand. So, match that up, you know, even at us conservatively trying to budget for a four hundred and forty thousand dollar transfer, we're not even meeting. Half of our depreciation. So philosophically, as you're looking at tax rates, think about cash funding and being a conservative community. We're not even funding half of what our depreciation depreciation. So, that bill comes due at some point. And we're seeing that already. You can look at where the trends are uh within general asset replacement. Uh you can look at from fiscal year seventeen. Uh you know, through twenty two, um we basically, you know, have been depleting the tax, uh I mean, depleting those uh fund balances. Uh over these last few years as we've had to fund uh our 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 asset uh replacement program. Um and then because of the pandemic, other things have not really been replacing that savings account.
Actually, you know, we have to make some kind of increase more to do that, to address that. I think that's an item. That the community can understand.
So, and I had forgotten, but on this next slide is where we do, you do in the budget allocate the asset replacements for the year.
We do. That's correct. Yeah, we try to get some indication of what. Exactly major capital purchases. So, uh Julie or Amy, I'm not sure which one of you guys wanted to kinda go through these and some. And I know we're a little bit short on times. We didn't wanna go through these in great detail, but wanted to at least give you an idea of what please our departments have seen as some of the highest priorities. Within this fund category.
Yep. So, this shows, um yeah, the individual items priced out here. Biggest one on the list is a paper for the streets department. Been talking about for a little while and they've they've been looking at. So, four hundred and twenty five thousand there. Um other big ticket items include ambulance, which the fire department has a very detailed ambulance replacement plan. That they bring something to you each year. It's either a brand new ambulance or a box replacement for an existing ambulance, that kinda thing. So, it's part of their multi-year plan. Um patrol vehicles, this is um three patrol vehicles. For the um for the police department. Um and then we have IT servers. Um generator that we've talked about. Anyway, the the list goes on from there. You'll also see some leases. Uh we have. You know, uh increased the use of our leases through enterprise. Um that does allow us to um. You know, kind of finance things over time. We're not paying for the entire vehicle upfront. Um so, at the end of twenty two, we'd be looking at having thirteen leased vehicles.
So, we talked about the leased vehicles and getting updated on that, seeing how that was kinda working. Is is are we too far at the beginning of this process? To really be able to dive in to that because we're only like in year one?
Yeah.
Take a couple of years before we really are able to analyze this is the right way to go?
Yeah. So, I I think what we could do is bring kind of a mini presentation back to you guys as we're going through this budget process. Uh it's a great opportunity. I was just about to mention Guillermo Garcia and the work that he's done. Uh both on uh the lease component and really going through and doing a great analysis with departments on, okay. These are maybe lower mileage vehicles that we could just transfer over. This is kinda the second phase now of. Uh the uh of of the next level of of vehicles that we feel like we could move towards the lease program. Um Guillermo has also done a great job in really looking at all of our rolling stock across all of our departments. You know, as you know, he helps manage garage. And so, they've done a really good job about matching up equipment with their, what what they estimate to be their continued useful life. And really giving us an idea of, okay, give us a ten-year forecast of what we think the lifespan of some of these vehicles will be. Again, it's a forecast. We don't always know, right? But really helping us try to match up, okay, what are we looking at down the road for the general asset replacement need across the organization?
And as time goes on too, you're gonna re- you're gonna recognize the some of the realities that aren't financially based, right? So, you know, patrol vehicle, should every officer be assigned their own to patrol vehicle? And should we increase the fleet? In which way should we be increasing the fleet? And so, that is more than just a financial calculation as well, right? So, we'll have to look at all of the operations and how it's literally looking on on the ground.
Yeah, for example, when we first presented the enterprise lease program to y'all, we really talked about the safety features of having new vehicles. And how, you know, some of our city vehicles didn't even have airbags. Um we have a lot. And a lot without anti-lock brakes and some things that are standard safety features on vehicles now. Uh because some of our city vehicles are so old, they didn't even have those safety features. So. Um yeah, so other things like that. But in general, our experience with enterprise and Guillermo can speak to this too, has been very positive. Um very.
Well, I would say enterprise has been a very good partner to us. Uh they go out of their way to find vehicles, bring them in to us as quickly as possible. Uh the biggest hiccup this year is really the automotive. No chips really to bring us vehicles. But that's been, but even through that, they've worked very well to get us some ve- get us the vehicles that we've needed. Um overall. And so, this year, one of the things that we're gonna try to is we're gonna get two uh patrol vehicles. That are gonna be leased as well to kinda test that out to see we want, if that's something we wanna go forward with. Um but right now, we're still gonna do major purchases on those vehicles. Uh I will tell you that right now, our fleet is aging. I mean, um with some of the changes that we've done, I mean, we've been able to bring it down from like about. Eleven and a half years to about eleven years.
No, I mean, that's great.
We have an aging.
Yeah, absolutely. No, my my and my consideration is just that once you've put those vehicles in play. And you're looking at the numbers and everything, how is that actually affecting the departments, you know? Um and and mostly good, obviously, cause you're getting new fleet in, like you said, but but just all the realities that go along with that.
And we are looking to increase the program. As you'll see here, we have seven existing vi- vehicle leases. And that does then present though, an annual. Cost that has to be assessed within this fund, right? And so, that's a recurring as opposed to a one-time purchase. Uh but we are looking at increasing it uh and actually increasing uh six new leases to this program. So, we we think that that trend will continue. Thus far, it's been very positive.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I need to.
Sure, no problem. No problem. Thank you for your time today. So, moving on to general capital projects. Um just kinda recapping uh some of the previously funded and in progress. And as you recall, we've got about thirty different active capital projects. But this is just a few of them. We talked about street reconstruction and drainage improvements. Certainly, a very aggressive program this last year. As we mentioned before, almost five billion uh in deployment uh this year. Uh and then the street maintenance, uh cash funding, uh and the the. Roughly two million dollar program that we've uh we've had uh over the course of several years. Uh Heritage Center has been one. Uh again, much of this is uh grant funded or endowment funded, uh not necessarily general fund. Uh some of that's also coming from uh hot elements, but we do anticipate a deployment of those dollars uh uh moving forward. Possible new projects, um things we've talked about, uh you know, within uh within council and some of the priorities you guys have talked about. Uh public safety building, uh I think really kind of rose to the forefront uh in our council retreat discussions. Uh that's gonna be one that we've had really within our general fund discussions for about five years on how are we gonna move forward? How are we gonna fund this project, knowing that it's a multimillion dollar project? Um you know, we are reaching a a really a point of criticalness, I think, with that building. And chief can certainly speak to that. Um some modest levels of uh park improvements. Uh you know, I think we've had discussions. Uh you've heard from some of the folks at uh airport, uh in particular, related to some of their paving elements. Uh we are uh seeing some elements within the golf course that are uh aged. Uh we've also received some grant funding. Uh that for golf course that we'll be looking at making some infrastructure improvements. Uh and then downtown improvements, as you know, we've been aggressive on the grant front. Some of those do have some matching components. We may not know timing wise until a little bit later this summer on whether we've been successful. We hope that we are. But that will have an impact as as far as uh you know, being able to allocate some of our general fund resources uh towards those matching components.
Yeah, yeah. I noticed on this fire page, you've got uh KSP security gate listed on here.
Right.
Um, has there been safety issues out there?
So, it's really related to the riverside of KSP. Um so, um as you recall, we do have an automatic gate on the hillside component. We're looking at making some security gate enhancements to that other side, uh to be able to allow for better security uh for folks going into that riverside.
Okay.
Yeah, very similar to what we have uh on the on the hillside.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh there's, you know, it's, we we typically have that facility manned either through staff personnel or through volunteers. Twenty-four seven, but they're not always necessarily right there at the gate. And so, we do provide, we do uh feel like that would provide better security for our guests. Uh on on really both sides of the facility. So, moving to general debt services, Amy?
All right. So, general debt service. So, this is a separate fund, but it is kind of related to the general funds. We're gonna talk about this some here. Um so, general fund debt service gets its revenues from that debt service portion of the tax rate, that seven point three five percent. And um just looking at this graph here, this shows our existing debt service. So, the existing debt that we have, how much we have to pay each year. So, you can see that between twenty one and twenty two, it's going down just a little bit, about fifty two thousand dollars. And then it, there's bigger drop off um in twenty three. Um so, um what that means is, I'm gonna go to the next slide here, looking at our debt capacity analysis. Um back in twenty ten, um council set just a policy, but about um about keeping the debt. Portion of the tax rate unchanged. Um and so, if we keep that debt portion of the tax rate unchanged as council policy dictates. We have some ability to pay more in debt service, to issue debt, but keep the tax rate unchanged. So, that's what this is showing us. So, we've been doing a lot of um modeling analysis and talking to our financial advisor and bond counsel and that kinda thing. And given our um property tax valuations and that unchanged tax rate. Um and looking at the current interest rate environment, um we think we have the capacity to issue six point five million. In debt in twenty twenty one and another ten million in twenty twenty two. And we're looking specifically at the public safety building. Um and this, like EA mentioned, um we first put this in um a budget book as part of our ten-year community investment. Plan back in the summer of twenty fifteen. And it's always been list, it's been listed every year since then. And it's been listed as a debt funded. The public safety building, the public safety complex. Um and it has been shown as a debt funded um building. So, we are now finally getting to the point though where we have that capacity within the tax rate to keep the tax rate the same. But issue the debt and fund the public safety building.
So, that does uh move to, you know, if that is something the council is interested in moving forward with. Uh there are some calendar elements and some statutory elements within that uh that would begin to trigger uh really as early notification. Uh is required by statute uh pretty early in the summer. Uh and in fact, uh at at one of your upcoming uh council meetings. Possibly as early as next week. That doesn't tie council to moving in that direction. It's simply the early notification process to let the public know that the council's beginning to deliberate that.
Yeah. So, what Julie's handing out right now is a calendar, a draft calendar. And this is from. Um our financial advisor and bond counsel on, you know, what um what steps are involved, what council would need to vote on. And what we'd need to be doing in the background in order to issue debt in um September. That would be this around six point five million and would keep our tax rate the same, but we'd be able to pay the debt service with that. And it would start on June twenty second with um council passing um or considering. A resolution that is an intent to issue debt. So, that is not authorizing the debt. That's authorizing a publication saying this is what we're considering. And it would kind of set the wheels in motion as far as putting an official statement together, getting a rating from the rating agency. Um it would set those things in motion, but um it then it would be up to council in August, at the end of August. To actually um make a decision in terms of ordinance on issuing debt.
Yeah. And so, that lines up with your uh your other calendar, your budget calendar, right? Uh in the process that then ensues during that August and September timeframe of actually setting your tax rate and setting your budget. So, they are somewhat overlaid processes, um but again, one doesn't necessarily, um you know, preclude the other.
So, all we, all we need, if we, if council decides that they wanna go through this process, then. We are starting from the beginning earmarking this for public safety or whatever is so is so deemed as the project.
So, that notice that would be published in the paper specifically describes what the project is. And there are also um rules, state law governing what certificates of obligation can be issued for. And there's some changes in those rules that will take effect September first. But public safety um is specifically one of the items that the state legislature identified as. Yes, you can issue certificates of obligation for public safety buildings. for public safety buildings. Um, so.
What's the light of that? At this point, who do you understand will be in that building?
So right now, you know, we're continuing, uh, to, uh, explore a public safety building that would have, uh, police, fire administration and municipal court.
Yeah. Right. Municipal court.
That's correct.
EMS would be different stations.
Deployed across all of the stations.
Correct. Correct.
But the fire administration, so the chiefs would be.
I think there would be some level of kind of departmental, uh, storage elements that are kind of more widespread, uh, that are centralized or desire to be centralized would be as part of that as well. But, um, for the most part, uh, all of the operational pieces for KFD would still continue to be substationed.
Two, two pieces of real estate at that point, once, in the future, once the facility was constructed.
You have two, why?
You have, you would have the municipal.
Municipal court and.
Unused real estate.
And the leasing, right? The leasing that's being done by the fire.
Correct.
Right now, they don't.
Right. They're in three separate locations right now.
That's correct.
Gary Krachker said I, I wasn't right on this. Maybe not. I still think that existing lease building property, it's gotta be worth something to, to retail, operation or, not, 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 not to keep the building, but tear the building down.
Well, that's the expensive part.
Yeah. Yeah. But I understand Chief McCollum's really got attached to that building.
It's growing on.
That is one word for it. So Amy, you wanna go through the remaining calendar in the process?
Yep. Um, all right. So just looking out from here, the next steps. Um, so like we explained earlier, in, in July, July twentieth, we would be back with another budget workshop, this time focusing on water funds and all the other smaller funds that we haven't talked about. Um, that certified property tax role is due July twenty-sixth. The proposed budget has to be filed with the city secretary by July thirtieth. And then in August and September, um, council will be going through a series of, um, of public hearings and votes, um, on both the budget and the tax rate. And those are all ordinance votes that require two readings and a public hearing and all that.
I have a question. Okay. So like when we were talking about, so I'm looking at this, we've got water and other funds, other funds, including like hot fund.
Right.
Okay. So somewhere in here, we get presentations by, um, KEDC for their budget, or we approve EIC and how, and, and CBB and all of those other budgets that kind of fall into, um, our budget that we're, you know, airport, you know, all of these other.
Right. So, uh, some of those are component unit, uh, elements. Some of them are built into some of the other funds, right? So for instance, when we present on hot fund, TBB budget is typically a part of that, right? And so we may not talk about it in great detail, uh, but we'll, we'll have, that'll be encapsulated kind of within a summary.
Because they used to do the budget presentation and then we stopped doing that. And so what are we gonna?
They have provided us.
They've provided you.
Yeah. Of things that they would like funded. And then we'll be presenting the hot budget to you in July.
I just asked because I think it's been brought to my attention that, that maybe there's some things within the CBB budget that have just been ongoing for a number of years, um, that specifically on the marketing element for nonprofits, um, that there are twelve selected nonprofits and year after year after year after year after year, that those twelve nonprofits are being marketed by the CBB. And I'm just curious to see if they're looking at, um, any potential, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, absolutely. What we can do as part of that budget workshop on, if there's some particular, um, component pieces that y'all are interested in.
I think there's a lot of historical things built into that budget. Like, I think from the time that maybe they decided to fund, like they, they can do, they can, I think they've got like an allocation of sixty thousand dollars, something like that.
For the arts co-op?
For the marketing. And within that, it's twelve nonprofits that are built into that. So, uh, since the time that that was established, that idea and is kind of carried forward, how many other nonprofits are not being represented or how is that equal reference? You know, that kind of thing. But maybe it's time just to go, hey, are, you know, arts community and representation, since they're getting so much of the hot fund as it is, um, you know?
What we can do, if, if CBB is a particular one that, uh, council is interested in, we can have Julie.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm not necessarily, it was just brought to my attention. It's like, you know, we've, in, in the last twelve years or however many years they've been doing this, it's been like marketing to the same, for the same twelve groups. And it has to be, I know, outside that fifty mile radius and et cetera, et cetera. Um, but if we're paying their budget and then they're marketing for those groups and some of the arts groups aren't being represented, I don't know the answer. But I just would like to ask the question.
I think Julie can better explain that story about how they do arts co-op funding every year.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be good.
I think there is an application process.
Okay. See, I'd like, I'd like to be able to know a little bit more about that.
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, I think that wraps it up.
I don't know that it is, but we can, we can talk about that today if you'd like to.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. All right. Um, all right. Anything else before we go?
Are we, so looking at the, the schedule for the CEO, I didn't see it on our, um, pending agenda items, but I'm assuming staff is gonna propose a resolution at our next meeting, uh, next week?
Yeah. So right now we would anticipate, um, having that on agenda for council to discuss, uh, at your upcoming meeting, uh, probably on Tuesday.
Okay.
All right.
So I did wanna make mention before you gavel that out, um, today is our last, um, very sad news, uh, to announce that.
Why? No, don't gavel us out.
This Amy Dozier, uh, is, is leaving the city, uh, but, but still staying within our extended family, uh, headed to Cape Town. So, um, she's gonna be continuing to assist us as we go through, uh, the summer, uh, budget supplemental process and as we, uh, work through, uh, various budget discussions. But today is her last full-time day with us here at the city. So we're very sad to see Amy go, but so, um, very, um, pleased with her dedication to the city over the last eight years. Had just a tremendous, uh, tremendous professional, um, and just tremendous service that she's provided to us.
Yeah. So grateful for you. Thank you, Amy. Yeah.
Despite of that, I, I know we don't, um, quote in the workshop, but this is a resolution for the council to consider. The city council resolves to hinder and prevent and prohibit CFO Amy Dozier from leaving the wonderful and welcoming city staff to go to some kind of place known as the Kerrville Pub. So, you know, there we go. We're adjourned.